Okay, I'll follow the meeting, the July 11th, 2017, meeting of the Village of Port Edward's Board to order. And at this time, I'd ask the clerk to call the rule, please.
Okay, trustee Bingham?
Right.
Trustee Duncan? Here. Trustee Grundin? Here. Trustee Martinson? Here. Trustee Mitchell? Here. And trustee Saylor? Thank you.
And trustee Saylor has the excused absence tonight. At this time, I'd ask you to rise and we'll recite the pledge. After the recitation of the pledge, we'll ask you to stand, keep standing for a moment of silence in honor of all those who paid the ultimate sacrifice so we could meet tonight. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as all. Thank you very much, please be seated. If anybody thinks I have the fans put up too high, I have already been chastised by the sight of the Village Board table, so we'll leave it at that. First thing up is entertaining a motion to approve the minutes of a June 30 board meeting. We have a motion by trustee Duncan, second by trustee Bingham, to approve. Any discussion? Hearing no request, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both. That motion carries unanimously. We're at the time for public comments on the agenda, and I see the folks in attendance still wants to speak tonight, so thank you for coming, though, that really means a lot. And I'd like to take an opportunity at this time, there's a gentleman that you, when you watch this on Wisconsin Rapids Community Media, you're not going to see because he's taping the meeting for future broadcast, is Jesse Austin. He's one of the prime camera folks and whatever other titles that he has over at WRCM. I know Jesse now for over two years, he also does the same function for our county board meetings, so Jesse, it's really good to have you. I have nothing on the president report, but I guess tonight we'll call item number seven, the chief of police report. And so, chief, I would call on you if you'd come through and send the police man, and she has a special little presentation she would like to make.
The police department found itself in a situation where we were running low on our shoulder patches, we had to purchase more. From there, I spoke with the officers and asked them if they wanted to keep the same patches that we had, or if they wanted to move on to something new. They voted to move on to something new. From there, they then took in to consideration what they wanted to see on a patch, it came up a kind of a concept, and they wanted to see the history of Port Edward's put on the patch, and that's kind of where we got stuff. I called Mr. Bueller and asked if he would be willing to help us out with that, and he took a decent portion of his morning to come down and sit down and talk to me and tell me all about the history of the village and how it was founded, and he brought with him artifacts, photographs, other things that I could pass on to the patchmakers in order to make this patch. So, Mr. Bueller, and thanks for your participation in that, the time that you spent on it, we've got this for you.
Does this give me any authority if I wear it?
I'll look the other way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was only fair if you tell us a little bit about your participation in the design.
Well, if you haven't seen it, you got one on Jim?
No, I don't.
Oh, come on. It shows a logger which started our billy jaw, the logging or lumbering industry. It shows the river, which parallels the whole Village of Port Edward's down here. It incorporates some logs floating on the river, which was a primary source of transportation for lumber and logs coming to the sawmill. And it says police, American flag on it, and Port Edward's. So, yes, I gave Jennifer several suggestions, and this is, I think, a composite of a couple of them, so nice job, thank you.
Thank you again, Marson. Okay, nothing else, we're going to go into IMA, which are committee reports, and chairman Bingham, you're up, sir.
Okay, thank you. There are no motions to bring to the board, but there was a number of discussion items which I'll briefly summarize for you. It was an excellent attendance by the public with some significant questions about the Polk Avenue project, a number of residents wanted to make sure they had access during that project, and what was going to happen with, if they would be without water and this type of thing. Administrator Page answered those questions, I think, in a very good way, and like any plan, we're hoping that things work out in a smooth way, but when you have a project going on, there are changes in that, so it was good to have the questions from the people, the residents in that area, and I'm glad that we were able to respond to them. Also had some questions about a building permit. Administrator Page is working on that, and on that particular one, we would like to make sure that in the future that building permits are done in a timely basis and encourage that to occur. Also, it was brought to our attention that there may be brush on the corner of Seventh and Latandra, creating a blind spot, and I don't know if that's been taken care of. Street superintendent Dell Stewart was gonna take a look at that, I don't know if he was able to do anything with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Are you aware of that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, appreciate that. Going on down to, talking about wells, as always we do, it seems like in the street committee, well number four is running at 240 to 245, it should be around 270, so there is not a major concern, but a slight concern, a somewhat of a concern, we may have to look at a steam cleaning again. I think the business that did it last time, the vendor that did it last time, is no longer doing that, is that correct?
We did it ourselves.
We did it ourselves? I thought there was a vendor in there.
They were involved, but we did the steam.
Okay, all right. So, we're gonna look at the budget as we get near the end of the year and see what monies may or may not be available. It's not a crisis situation, but it is something we definitely want to keep our eye on. Related to the well discussion, two areas have been identified by laying for possible well exploration. There's pros and cons, you know, if you go further out, it's easier access to the land, you have the land, you can get it, use it. The closer you get to the village, you've got to deal with land acquisition from residents who are even land that may be contingent to their property, and they may not be in favor of that, so there may be some resistance on that. So, we're continuing to look at that for the future, hopefully we can come to something as we move forward on wells. If I, and Jim, or if someone correct me, Urkel uses about 70% of our water, is that a number?
There is a number, Jim, everyone uses water. I don't have a percentage.
Well, okay, so.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds, okay, 66%. No, I, just a rough number.
They're a big.
They're a big user, and obviously, and we want them here, so it's just, but it's a reality, and something we're always cognizant of. Again, we had a, on the agenda, we had the Polk water main replacement from two to six inch. There's been some things that have transpired since the street committee met. Administrator Page brought me up to date yesterday on that, and there may be, I don't know if this is a time, we don't want to address it at this particular time. Okay. There was at one time, and there was a discussion on water sewer bills being sent to landlords and requests by some landlords to send directly to tenants, for obvious reasons, I think. We're not gonna create a new policy, but if you're a landlord and want it sent to the tenant, you come in and notify us. Diane in the office, she will do that. And so, we're comfortable in doing it that way, rather than getting into a policy or something like that, so I hope that doesn't create a lot of problems for Diane, and if it does, obviously, we'll have to take another look at that. There's some administrator updates, the CPR has been, CPR training for village personnel is completed, except for one staff member through mid-stay, and is good for two years. Status on Ripple Creek disc golf course, it's up, and the signage is still being worked up, but the baskets and poles are up. On hold number six, there's, it's kind of a mushy wetland there, and they're looking for some kind of bridge or walk, I call it a walkway rather than a bridge, so that he can access that without sinking into that wet area, and so that's yet to be, yet to occur. Oh, I did forget to mention one thing on public comments, Paige Beckeroyd inquired about placing two urns in their plots in the cemetery that were already occupied by other family members, is occupied the right word? Occupied, used by other family members, interned in those plots, and there is some concern about doing that, but she was very receptive to looking, they have another plot in the cemetery that she was, she said she would look at, I've not received any feedback on that, she was gonna come back, I mean, we're very willing to work with her on making that happen, but the concern, and following the ordinance, is that we didn't think putting another, putting an urn, damaging the casket or what was already in the ground could be a problem. So, she was very receptive at that time, and she was gonna do some checking on the other lot, and then come back to us, so I thought that, and that's on the, that's on the agenda for the next meeting. Any other items? The compliance maintenance annual report is submitted. Oh, as far as mowing grass, there was some concern in who does what, when, and Public Works will send them a letter, and then if it's not mowed after five days, then a ticket will be issued and sent out after they're through mows. And I understand there's a number of these in Port Edward's, chief?
A number, I'm not sure what that number is, but there's more.
There's.
Yeah, there's more than we'd like to see, and so that process was kind of defined for everyone, so you know what Public Works does, and we know what the chief and her department will do. During the bow hunt, and when does that start? When does that bow hunt start? That must not start?
September.
September, the parks will be closed, that was just an informational item. So, I would ask the board to move to accept the comments, discussion from the June 20th meeting.
Is there a motion to do that effect, and that would be trustee Duncan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Martinson, any discussion further? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, all in favor?
Aye.
No, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Then moving on, we go to the Planning Property and Information Technology Committee, chairman Martinson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request made by Kyle Cronin to place two, stop, no stopping, no standing, and no parking, Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. signs, which would be placed between Washington Avenue and Levine Avenue on the west side of Third Street. John Edwards High School Law Enforcement Club will donate them up to $150, and the village will install them at our cost.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Grundin, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the developers' agreement with Cyber One to include an additional $15,000.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, from the Cyber One presentation, they request additional funding on their monies for the development, or his agreement, is there any discussion by the trustees on this? I would just have one, how, I was out of town, so how did that discussion go fairly well? Any problems or anything? You feel free, Mr. Adams, to join in.
Mr. Adams and his partner, Jamie, came in and discussed it with us, they are short on their funds. The original was 171,000, I believe, and they requested a little over the 15,000, but we agreed that the 15,000 would be acceptable to the village. And they are going to, I think Attorney Apps is gonna bring up the development agreement, am I correct with that?
Yes, well, assuming that the, that the motion will pass, I would, I would amend the development agreement, and just to be clear, these are for additional capital costs, which are explicitly, explicitly permitted by statute pursuant to the tax regroupment funded statutory rules, so I could say more about that, but probably.
That's what I was hoping to hear, in that matter, so. Okay, I would ask trustee Martinson, we had a little discussion, to read back the motion, please.
Motion to amend the developers' agreement with Cyber One to include an additional 15,000.
Okay, we've had the motion, and second by trustee Grundin, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
I'd like to take a motion to approve the certified survey man, number 9182, for Brad and Jessica Corbine.
Second.
Second by trustee Duncan, any discussion by the trustees? Hearing no request, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
I want to explain a little bit, number five, the 125 summary plan document, which we did need to sign. The village has an agreement, and this was a document that actually has to be fulfilled on our part and kept in the village office, and we're just carrying through with that. So, with that, I'll make a motion to sign the 125 summary plan document.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Duncan, to review section 125 summary plan document, all, any discussion by the trustees? Hearing no request, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the committee.
Second. Second by trustee Bingham, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on, we will now go into the Public Safety Committee, and chairman Mitchell.
Okay, and in our meetings, we had a discussion under the fire department about promotion of officers, discipline of firefighter, and recovery of pay for fire inspections, and the chief's retirement. There were no motions there, and then under the police department, we took a tour, Jen gave us a tour of the police department, and there were multiple issues that actually came up through that, and some of the things that we discussed were the availability and interaction of the department, or people in the department, with village residents. We learned a lot about what they do, and how things, how evidence is stored, security issues, things related to that. We also discussed access for the police department to the village website. The motion, which is on the minutes, I am pulling as a motion, there was confusion related to several different things, and it should have been a recommendation, not a motion, so I am pulling that off of the agenda for this evening, in agreement with both trustee Martinson and president Zerfle.
That would be a motion to rescind them, chairman?
Yes.
I'd second that.
Second by trustee Grundin, any discussion by the trustees, trustee Martinson?
Yes, I would like to mention that we did have a lengthy discussion regarding, and this took place at our HR and finance meeting, lengthy discussion regarding the fact that we do have an individual who was going to be resigning from the police department. We, I feel that, I know this is going back to the HR department as far as that decision and moving forward, how we're gonna handle it, but I would like, my request was to have the safety committee do some investigating and reviewing of how things have been going in the police department, and instead of just, you know, pushing through and hiring an additional person. I know there are a couple people that are interested in the position, so I think we'll move forward with that, with the safety committee, I'll be together with trustee Mitchell, we'll have a discussion, and then she and I will both carry that through with our selected committees.
And just so everybody knows, we did have that discussion.
Would, my question would be, we anticipate a motion to come from FHR, reference the full-time position for August?
I would expect, yes.
Okay. Or September, and the latest. Okay, any other discussion?
I guess.
Okay, sorry, Jim.
Just so I'm clear, that when it goes back to HR, we're going to review the request.
That's correct, we will.
We're not, we, we may or may not, we don't know, right now, that's an open discussion, correct, is that correct?
That's correct, I'd like to review the situation as it sits. I know that, you know, we've got two individuals that are interested. I also know that the resignation is going to be taking place fairly soon, on July 24th, I believe, or, excuse me, 14th is the last date for that individual to work, but we do have our two part-time officers that can fill in. I think that we just, I would like to take some time and review this, it's always a good time when an individual is leaving a company, or with us being the village, that we take that time and opportunity to review the department itself and look at possibly other options, I'm not saying we will or we won't, but I feel that we just need to do some reviewing on that.
Thank you for that clarification. Trustee, you're on it now.
Is there a policy in place for exit interviews?
I'm glad you brought that up, I've been thinking about this ever since I was notified that we are going to have an individual leaving, I don't know if we've done that in the past, but I think it would be proper for HR to take care of that. Exit interviews are always welcomed by, whether it's gonna be the employer or the employee, we get some good feedback as to how things have been going, reasons why they decide to leave, and so on and so forth, so I think that's a great idea, and I did plan on doing that, I think that's a great idea.
Who sits in on that? The chief, the administrator, head administrator of the department, and you?
I believe that, you know, I don't know if that's ever been done before with the village, but I think, excuse me, go ahead.
Chief, Tom Bartlett did, he requested, it was the whole village board.
We'll carry through with that, if you'd like.
The ones I'm then used to is where the direct supervisor's not involved.
Oh, okay.
Because it becomes kind of, and I'm not saying this about the chief, but somebody leaves an organization, it may be as a result of their supervisor, and they feel intimidated to speak, and usually it's an HR-type person that does that.
I guess I'd be that type of person.
Well, and if you want, you know, if you're looking for the committee to assist on that, or however, that's just a suggestion, however you want to do it.
Sure, I wasn't sure if the village had a policy in place, but I think we'll maybe have a little discussion on that.
I'm sure you have that on the fire department, and chief?
Perhaps he requested, when he was leaving, he just requested it, I don't think there's a policy.
I can't remember it.
You, yeah, I don't know if you were on there then or not, you just, oh, three years ago?
Still chief of police.
Yeah, he has, he requested, like, an exit interview to talk about the future, so.
Okay, very good, I would just like to throw in my two cents on this, that, you know, we have just recently hired a new part-time officer, and it's, I've done this in the past when we've been short due to another part-time officer going to a larger department, full-time employment, you can't really blame him for doing that, that I've worked part-timer as basically a three-quarter position, a three-quarter time, you know, just so we, and I know, chief and I have talked, and that's probably what we'll do, just so you know. And that also takes off having to make a snap-wash decision.
Absolutely.
The Public Safety Committee will come forward, or I will come forward with the rationale that we went through in order to come to the recommendation that we did, so.
Thank you, chairman Mitchell. Well, we've had our discussion, anybody else? You were gonna say something, I cut you off.
No, I was thinking about the minutes, not the motion.
Oh, okay, so we will, a, I vote is to agree with chairman Mitchell's rescinding of the motion, and of course, they vote would be to oppose the rescinding, so all those in favor of rescinding the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And I want to thank chairman Mitchell and her committee, and chairman Martinson and her committee for working on this, and chief, for your involvement, thank you. Okay, back to you.
Okay, now I'd like to move to accept the minutes as printed for our July 6th meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Bingham, is there any discussion? Hearing no request, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now back to chairman Martinson for the Finance and Human Resources Committee, and I just want to point out one thing, it was just a typo error in that area, you will not see to approve the minutes under there, but we still can make that.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of the bills.
Second.
Second by trustee Grundin, motion to approve the monthly bills, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the journal entries of the previous month.
Second by, I have trouble with trustees or chairmen, trustee Mitchell, to approve the journal entries of the previous month, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Trustee Duncan asked for the printout on the, did you get that on your request, you didn't?
We're working on that.
Okay, that's why, we come to budget time, I would really, this is our handy little secret thing from the county, and like, data's got one, it's so easy electronically, that way if we have amendments and stuff, we can get them all faster, so you are working on it, so that I will be quiet for once.
I have done this in every position I've owned, even when I was on the boyhood school board when I was 20, and the 14 million dollar budget, expenditures were in a pack like that, I read it every page, so, just.
Well, school board does it too, all electronically.
Yep, and I read all those too, so, yes, for nine years I read.
Okay.
And it's just because if somebody calls and says they have some concern, I can say I read it, I didn't see a problem.
Very good, I just think that's.
Absolutely. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the committee.
Second.
Second by trustee Grundin, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Did commissioner Martinson send a report over for the airport commission? I know we have the minutes in the packet from it, would she have any comments on it? We have one from June 1st, and one also from?
June 19th. There was an update on the airport approach clearing instructions, and they are negotiating ongoing with Bullseye Country Club. That was from the June 1st meeting. And from the June 19th meeting, there was old business regarding a proposal for use of the commission hangar for a wedding reception, which looks like it's going to be approved. There's a few things that I know have to be worked out with that, but it does look like that's gonna happen, and then they had further discussion regarding the agreement Bullseye Country Club again on the tree. That's about it, and the airport commission, so I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the committee.
We have a, we have a motion to approve the airport commission meeting minutes of June 1st, 2017, and June 19th, 2017, and a second by trustee Duncan, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Unfinished business from previous meetings, does anybody have anything?
I do have something that I just wanted to elaborate a little bit more on, which trustee Duncan brought to our attention. We do, I did put in a request to have the attorney's bills be itemized in the future, and I think that's a very important thing for us, and we'll be seeing those, we're working out the details on that item. working out the details on that item.
It's a sharp time, the table tonight. You guys are really out of whack tonight. Little level in there.
Man, regarding the attorney's bills, our second quarter bill, if it hasn't been sent, it will be within the next day or two, and I can vouch personally for the fact that it's been itemized, so.
Thank you. Is that, is that bill such that we will be able to provide it at the next board meeting then?
Provide it?
In other words, it, I know it, in order for it to become part of public record, is it?
It's generally subject to attorney-client privilege.
Okay.
So.
Except the money's, that's public record.
Except the overall expenditure.
That's public.
The specific line items are considered, I mean, there are confidentiality issues with respect to those things. There are items that are, that I've worked on, for example, that have been the subject of closed meetings, for example, so, and really, we've talked about redacting, but it's really, virtually impossible task.
Okay.
It hasn't been necessarily the case with the current composite of the Supreme Court, but if you even disclose the billing practices or an itemized thing that pertains to a confidential matter that could open the door to a wave of confidentiality in the fall.
Which I would not recommend.
Yeah.
It's always a joy when two attorneys are speaking about something. It really is scary when I understand what they're talking about. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Pete.
One last issue on that, correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, but we've been getting itemized bills since last June, I believe, is only starting.
I haven't personally gone over the bills. I think JP LaChapelle has been doing that up until this point, but like I said, personally I can vouch for the past quarter.
Just to let the board know, we haven't gotten itemized bills since either June or September of last year, so they are all, they all have been itemized very detailed down to the last quarter hour, I believe.
And trustees, remember, you have the right to go in and review.
Absolutely.
Okay, there is no, I mean, you're privileged too, and I encourage you to do that.
If any of the trustees have any questions for me on the billing practices, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pete. We'll move on now to new business.
You had 200 old business matters, didn't you?
No, they're under new business, I think.
No, there's 200 unfinished and 200 new.
The other one.
You wanted me to just mention that we got a letter from WIDEC. It's a form letter, but we had a blank queue. I think we've all come to the conclusion that DMI has not compromised any information, so we're going to fill out the annual performance report to the best of our abilities with the numbers we have and turn it in and go from there. So we'll have that out before the 26th of July, so that, again, that was a form letter they sent, some of the statements in them weren't necessarily correct, and they apologized for it. The other one is.
I have a question.
Yep.
Is that the, what, what is that that you're talking about again?
It's for the WIDEC grant, we have to fill out an annual performance report.
When's that due?
The grant.
The performance report?
It's a requirement of the grant that we have to fill out, I believe we have to fill out annual report, annual report for 2016, 17, and I believe 18 yet, and depending on how they view our closure of it, they can, they can actually potentially close it out this year, depending on what they.
So when is that due, the report?
The report was due in March, but we did not get, we discovered that we weren't getting the correct information from the developer, or enough information, so we've been working on diligently in conjunction with three members of WIDEC and our attorney to try to obtain this information, and to date we have been unsuccessful. I spoke with Mr. Weber this morning, he said, we've been doing everything as requested, we're just going to have to move forward to the best of our ability, and it's kind of in our hands, and I.
I'd like to, if it's okay, Rick, I'm going to have Nick finish up, and then we'll move on.
Yeah, well, thanks, Rick. Yeah, everything, however extensive and accurate, the issue that we have run into here is that WIDEC is under new management as far as their legal department, so they have a new chief legal counsel, and what appears to have happened is that she appears to come in and sent out form letters to all of the grant recipients. And again, there were some statements regarding compliance in the letter that were not accurate. I've talked to Tim Weber also. So far as I know at this time, there are no plans to compel the village to pay back any of the grant, but I'm continuing to stay in touch with WIDEC representatives and try and stay up ahead of this thing. If there is anything that they're concerned about, we should know. Right now, there isn't anything to report, and if there, if there are any major changes, we would probably discuss them in a closed session, am I recommendation first, and then bring them to a future board meeting after that. But right now, so far as I am aware, there is nothing, there is no substantive change. Does that answer your question?
Okay.
Can I just ask one question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're not getting cooperation from the developer?
That's correct. And in this case, the developer, just to avoid any confusion with Cyber One, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about, we're talking about DMI. So, yeah, there, we have not had cooperation in getting the numbers, the data that we need to fill out, to fill it out, so.
Is that the only area we've not had cooperation from DMI?
No.
I mean, you can look at the site and see the limit of the cooperation.
Is DMI handing us a bunch of wooden nickels for village treasury?
That's a, that's a difficult question to answer, especially in open session, given that there are some closed session decisions that probably need to be made.
Okay, and is DMI current on their property taxes?
No. And that's a matter of public record.
And so I, just was interested in that because I am rather irritated by that, so I would like to make sure this continues to be an agenda item in dealing with that company in the future going forward.
Nick, Nick said he would, if anybody had questions about another item we covered earlier tonight, he's always available to have a discussion, but you get into this, what's privy and what's not privy, and it's better sometimes to have a one-on-one with the attorney in that regard.
That's fine. I just wanted to make it public that my dander is up.
Memorialized?
They, yes, they should.
We don't memorialize anything.
If they, if they are at all interested, that, you know.
I would strongly suggest you and Nick have a chat.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to close the unfinished business, and Rick, I want you to take over for the, because we go on all night about this. Our new business, Rick called me on these two items yesterday, and he has put the agenda together. One of them, I don't think we really need any action, it's a total, from the board, it should be administrator's decision, but I told him, put it on here anyway, so you're brought up to date, and that's the Polk Avenue water main problem. But the first one, A, I'd like you to start with, Rick, is the discussion and possible action on the Port Road property wetland fill. We all know that what we're talking about, we have a pretty big pile of debris and sand out there that is invaded upon the wetlands, and so we need to remove it.
We received our letter of violation, I want to say, last Thursday, it was urgent for the fourth. So I met with a contractor here to try and see what the cost was to mitigate, what we need to handle. It looks like it'll be somewhere in the 9,500 range, and then some additional for potential haul that we may have to have, and then we've got additional village time, so I'm saying the cost to do that cleanup is roughly between, I'm going to guess, $10,000 to $15,000. We have till July 31st to complete this cleanup. The contractor felt he would be able to do it by then, if authorized. We did not budget for this, but we have the Sampson Road call work that we are, it's unlikely we're going to be able to do this year, which was, I believe, budgeted for $10,000, and the Sampson Road crack sealing prior to the ship seal that were in conjunction with Grand Rapids, which has also been postponed due to construction on that road. So I believe that we should take those two areas, put it towards, that about $16,000 should more than cover the cleanup that we're required to do by July 31st.
Do we have any files from that?
Not if we work with them and mitigate this by the 31st.
Basically, they're interested in pictures of the things that we've done so far that we're improving the site. It's not like if you don't have this done by July 27th, we're going to crack the whip, so they want to see progress. Pretty much, right, Rick?
Yeah, and again, I've set this up, we're ready to go with it, it's just a matter of, the board needs to know about it and understand that we have two projects that we know we're not going to do, which would cover fixing this project, which would get us out of violation.
Anything to say?
No, I, Rick taught me last night, I believe it was, and brought me up to date. To me, this is no question, you know, we've received a letter of non-compliance, and we need to move ahead and fix it. We found, Rick identified some funding sources. Do we need a motion on this?
If we're, we're not really.
We're just using existing funds.
Correct. We're not, we're not.
From another line.
The, we are budgeted, as it's Diane Lipp and I look at today, we set up this year under the reputation of John Trautman in six major categories. The location where the funds would come out would be in that category.
Within the category, so we don't have to worry about.
We don't have to shift anything, it's just that we're not going to do those two we thought we were going to do, we're going to do something else with it because we're required to.
I, yeah, I'm comfortable with what has been proposed. I don't think it needs a motion, in my opinion. Anybody else on that? Dana, need for a motion?
I don't think so, because it's all within the same parameter. You're just moving money from one. It's all in one, it's all in one account, just however you earmark it.
It's not even the Peter and Paul complex.
No, you're not changing pockets.
Right. Okay, all right, we are good with that, it's your committee's.
I'm very good with that, yeah, yeah.
Okay, Rick, number two.
In trying to execute the major street project, well, Port Howard's a major street project for the year, that Fourth Street Loop, we were, we needed to replace a water main from a two to a six. In doing that, I hired MSA for $2,300 to do that and to send that to the DNR for approval, which is a requirement, and in that process, we have, we found out that we do not have the water pressures, at least we don't believe we have the water pressures that are required by, by state code. So his recommendation is to submit this to the DNR, see where they fall on it, they could say you can put it in the way it is, or they may say, you can put it in, we want you to find out what the problem is here. It could be something fairly simple, we have to change a couple of blocks of water mainly, or it could be as drastic as we have to put a water tower in. They really aren't for sure. So he recommended that we submit it to the DNR, see where it falls, because in order to do that, we, it has to be DNR approval to replace that two to a six.
So when you started out, you said send to the DNR, so it has or hasn't been sent?
No, it has not been sent yet. I want to bring it to the board's attention before we send it in. I don't see where we have a whole lot of choice in this, but I guess it's our option. I also did, in the, what they did is they had done flow tests and found the pressures they believe are somewhat low. I finally found the AECOM report that was done in 2011 for other reasons, so that's another request that the DNR has asked that we provide that AECOM report to them to see what the pressure showed on that system model for whatever we were doing there.
So this is another one of those things that I wanted to just brought up for information. Rick asked me yesterday, should I just send it in? I said no, and Mr. Felkowski at the DNR can wait until Wednesday morning, you know, so I just wanted you to know before it went in.
Yeah.
And John, again, I hate to pick on you, but that's one thing that the CIR committee is going to have to study.
Right. I just have a question, I just had a question for Rick that I didn't ask last night, and I apologize, but that area has had low water pressures, but lots, people that were at that committee testified to that.
Yep.
And so now that, the difference, the DNR is involved because we're looking at two to a six.
Yeah, if you, if you do anything with the water system, DNR has to approve the moves, and I asked them, we have to move a height of 20 feet, that height they got knocked out, we actually literally have to send them a notification, we're moving a height of 20 feet.
So they didn't care when it was in the ground, that we had low water pressure, but I'm, now that we're replacing it, they're saying, well, you can't do it because you got low water pressure.
No, I don't, he doesn't know, because we haven't turned them into this. He said, I don't know how the DNR is going to react, he said, I wanted you to know this before, he said, I want your authorization as a village to turn this in, so you're aware of what's going on.
Sure.
I think it's, it's appropriate, because as you said, we do know we had, and they said it could be as simple, there's no guarantees till you run the study, as potentially replacing one or two blocks of water main from, let's say it's a 10-inch to a 14-inch, which may be a relatively cheap thing, and it could solve a problem, it could be as drastic as having to raise the water tower. But what he said is when you submit this to the DNR, they may say, okay, you're aware of this, we're not too worried about it, or they may say, okay, what's your plan for the five-year plan to fix this, we expect you to address this somehow.
Thank you for addressing that, I appreciate that.
Stay in good contact with Chairman Bigum and the CIR committee, MS, you know, as this goes forward.
So then I'll assume tomorrow I'm going to tell him to submit our two to six and see where it falls.
That's my opinion, Chairman Bigum, you good?
No, I'm good, yeah, I'm good, thank you.
All right, and for your information, the water study, I'm trying to contact AECOM if we can use some portion there, it might be significantly cheaper, but if we have to dead-on, it's about $350,000 for a system study.
Keep Chairman Bigum posted on that, here I go again. We should raise your salary. Do you have anything else, Ken?
No, I don't, I appreciate the feedback here.
Also, I would like to thank the administrators for buying into the thing about reporting to your chairman, because actually, village board isn't the time to report on this. These are two new things that had to be brought up, and that's what I want to keep that time for, instead of rehashing a lot from the committees. And chairman, thank you for buying into that also.
Mr. President, so I just want to make sure that I'm going to authorize that port road name of stock tomorrow, then?
Right, correct, that's what I, that's.
You bet. Last but not least, Village Port Tremol.
I have nothing.
Do we have any money? Right direction. You didn't get it all, Mr. Adams.
I'm sorry.
You tried, right. You have nothing.
No.
Okay, thank you. I asked you to remind me of that. Under communication, I have one thing, and it's kind of special in a way to me, because I've known the family even before I became a police chief in this town years ago. That's when we used to ride horses and tether them before Mrs. Cronkite's beauty shop, and the hitching post out there. Okay, enough of that. It is a, with our things, thank you sincerely for sharing our sorrow. Your kindness is deeply appreciated and will always be remembered. Thank you for the beautiful floral arrangement in honor of Janet. Jim and our whole family appreciate the gesture. Thank you very much, the family of Janat Lizer, and she's missed very much, along with the old office too, so. Thank you for sharing your family with us, chief. Otherwise, we're going to go into the committee calendar, and if I think.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask a question, and maybe we have already, and maybe somebody here can answer this. Is it appropriate to send Legacy a thank you for the $500,000? I guess I would if I got $500,000 from the village. Have we done that?
Rick, what do you think?
We have not yet, because we haven't got the official, we got it, we haven't got the official signatures, but I totally agree with John, that we should be sending him a kind of a thank you for $500,000.
Even though they know we've been in discussion for a couple of months here, and we appreciate it, I think something in writing.
Anybody have a problem with that?
No, I don't know who would do that. Would that come from the village president? Would that come from the village administrator? I, I just think it probably would recommend that it should possibly be done.
Hold on, is Kim back in money? I will get together with Kim.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
So I, we can stop there. Very good. Very good. Thank you for the extra work. It was kind of a tip for a tack.
Well, you've been on vacation with the president, and by the time you got back to work...
Times like this, Chairman Bigum, is when maybe I should just go back up. No, I'm just kidding. Committee meeting calendar. I will read it off, and if I am in error, the respective chairman, please correct me. One week from tonight, Jill, all these meetings, all committee meetings will be at the municipal building, Market Avenue. July 18th at 5:00 p.m., the Streets, Infrastructure, Recreation, and Cemetery Committee will meet in the municipal building. July 25th, Tuesday at 5:00 p.m., the Planning, Property and Information Technology Committee will be meeting at the municipal building. August 1st at 5:00 p.m., the Public Safety Committee will meet at the municipal building. August 3rd at 5:00 p.m., the Finance and Human Resource Committee will be meeting at the municipal building. And on Tuesday, August 8th at 7:00 p.m., will be our next village board meeting. How do I do? Okay. Before I call for a motion to adjourn, as trustees, do you have anything else you want to throw out there? Real short, Rick.
I believe we're in a commission meeting before the pit committee, for that, we're going to need a variance for a particular impairment.
You will keep Chairman Martinson...
So I'm sure that you consider we need a planning commission meeting either probably before the pit committee meeting.
And then you will contact the commission members for us, please?
I will do that, so I'll confirm with you. I just want to make sure you have it at least pretty, I'm pretty sure you're going to need it.
So you want a meeting before the 25th?
No. Usually you have it on the meeting, on the day of the pit, so I'm not sure if you would rather have the planning commission at 5:00 and then the pit at 6:00 to give yourself a little bit of float. I just want to make sure.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Otherwise, can we do a 4 o'clock?
I don't know the planning commission members. I never know when they're going to be available. I can try to tell them 4 o'clock.
I haven't sat in on many of those, but generally it's advantageous that if you start it at 5:00, your regular pit meeting time, that it goes right from there into the committee making the motions that they have.
Oh, okay.
See, it works out better under connect.
So if you want it at 4:00, I'll try to set it up that way. I was going to talk to you after meeting, but I wanted to make sure it got on, probably on the meeting list.
Okay.
The only one you might have trouble is Mr. Ziegler.
That is correct, so he would prefer probably 5:00 o'clock.
It's Tuesday, July 25th, right?
Pardon me?
Okay.
Yep.
Otherwise, 5:00 and 6:00 works for me as well.
So we'll tend to plan on 5:00 for planning and 6:00 for pit?
Okay.
Yeah, just, yeah. Just listed as starting time at 5:00 and planning committee to follow.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
On August 3rd, I will be out of state, but Tara has volunteered to attend the HR committee for me, and on August 8th, like our president, I still will be on vacation. So Diane, I will not be in attendance on August 8th.
Okay. Noted very well, Chairman Bigum. Thank you. Okay, before I call for a motion to adjourn, once again, I would like to thank Mr. Austin for coming down as the control person for Wisconsin Rapids Community Media, the right-hand man of Mr. Loaks, the head eye up there, and this is long overdue, and to the residents in attendance, it was your pushing for this that kind of inspired the new board to try and get this going as soon as we could, and I think it's going to be really a good thing. And if I remember correctly, Mr. Loak said we will be on Thursday afternoons on, okay, Jesse's nodding the affirmative, and this meeting will run until we have our next meeting, which we'll take care of. And also watch Rapids Community Media because they will have the committee meetings we just read posted on there, so you will know. Spread the word to our friends. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, trustee Bingham made the motion. Trustee Mitchell, second. We stand adjourned.
Thank you.